I'd like to call to order the October 26, 2020 council meeting. Because of COVID-19 restrictions, our meeting tonight is being held virtually by Zoom. Public comments for this meeting were accepted, actually they, as it turns out, we haven't gotten any, but they were accepted in advance by mail and email. These comments will be read in the public shortly. If you'd like to submit a public comment for our next meeting, please visit our website at www.maryam.org and follow the directions there. As a reminder, as in our many Zoom meetings in the past, please be conscientious and try have others trying to speak, speak slowly and clearly, and state your name prior to speaking. I will need to confirm my, something that may have been difficult to hear, so I will ask for clarification. The format for the council considerations on the items tonight are staff presentations, and then council questions, and then whole questions till the end of each staff presentation. In case we cover it during the presentation, if you have any questions, I will ask for them, and then please again physically raise your hand so that I can see you in the video. I can only see half of you, so Meredith is going to help me for those that I don't see. Now I'll ask our city clerk to please call the roll.
Mayor Sissom.
Here.
Councilmember Debold.
Here.
Councilmember Hands.
Here.
Councilmember Caldwell.
Here.
Councilmember Knaff.
Here.
Councilmember Neal.
Here.
Councilmember Pape.
Here.
Councilmember Silvers.
Here.
Councilmember Yodrich.
Here.
Very good. Public comments. Julie, would you please read any public comments that were submitted in advance into the record?
We have no public comments this evening, Mayor.
Hearing no public comments, I'll move beyond that segment of our meeting and move into our consent agenda. We have four items on the consent agenda this evening, and they are all considered to be routine by the city council, maybe enacted one motion. There's no separate discussion of these items unless council member requests, which in case the items are removed for separate consideration. Again, I have four items. Does anyone have an interest in removing any of the four items for further discussion? Whitney, did you have your hand up?
No, my headphones are getting staticky, so I was redoing my cord. New ones get here tomorrow.
All right, seeing that, I will then accept the motion and a second to approve the four items on the consent agenda.
I think Jason and Bob have their hands up.
Yes, I'd like to move that the council approved the consent agenda items one through four.
And Bob, would you like a second?
I'll second it, Mayor. This is Bob.
A motion made and seconded, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Debold.
Aye.
Councilmember Hands.
Aye.
Councilmember Caldwell.
Aye.
Councilmember Knaff.
Aye.
Councilmember Neal.
Aye.
Councilmember Pape.
Aye.
Councilmember Silvers.
Aye.
Councilmember Yodrich.
Very good. We'll move into our mayor's report. I don't have one item on the mayor's report, and that's confirm the appointment of Anthony Scott from Ward One to the Parks and Rec Advisory Board for a term expiring December 31, 2021. I think we all have received Mr. Scott's information in the packet, but for those who didn't receive the packet, I might mention that his name was brought to me by our Parks and Rec Director, and with her recommendation. Mr. Scott lives in Ward One. He is employed as a program specialist for the United States Government in Health and Human Services, and he's under the Administration for Children's, Children and Families. I think can make an excellent addition to our Parks and Rec Board. So unless there's questions, I guess I should ask, does anyone have any questions or comments about this before we ask for a motion and second?
I'd just like to say that I've always liked his house.
There you have it. All right, well then I'll ask for a motion and a second. Scott?
Mr. Mayor, I move that the council confirmed the appointment of Anthony Scott from Ward One to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board for the term expiring December 31, 2021.
And do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay.
Jason Silvers.
Motion and second made, Madam Clerk.
There you go. Councilmember Hands.
Aye.
Councilmember Caldwell.
Aye.
Councilmember Knaff.
Aye.
Councilmember Neal.
Aye.
Councilmember Pape.
Aye.
Councilmember Silvers.
Aye.
Councilmember Yodrich. Councilmember Debold.
Aye.
Motion passes eight zero.
Very good. That concludes the mayor's report. We'll move into council items. Again, the same procedure is in place for items under council items as the others with regard to asking questions and etc. The very first is consider approval of an ordinance adopting the 2018 Building and Fire Codes, and this is a first reading. Brian Dyer, would you please provide a staff update on this item?
Evening, Mayor, council members. Brian Dyer, Community Development Director. Seeming where you have before you the, for your consideration, the Building and Fire Codes, the 2018 Building and Fire Codes. Also with us this evening is Chief Dean, as well as Fire Marshal Mark Sweeney with the Overland Park Fire Department. They helped us quite a bit with this, as well as other folks on their staff, Clay Mike Casey and Kurt Nice. So they have put in a lot of hours and time on this, as well as Tony Adamson, our building official, as well. So I'm going to share my screen, go through a presentation for you, and then I'm going to stop in a couple spots for the presentation, let you all ask questions if you need, if you'd like. And so let me get started here. Hope everybody can see that. So again, seeming what we have for you is the first reading of the adoption of the 2018.
Brian, Brian, we can't see your screen.
Really? I thought I hit it. Just a second. Let's try it again. I clicked it.
Does it pop up and ask you to select which window to share?
It does. Just, yes, it did. There we go. Sorry. That was my technical difficulties. Sorry about that. Um, all right, let's go now. So again, first reading of the option of 2018 Building and Fire Codes. We are going to have, we have scheduled for the second reading for the last meeting in November. The purpose of giving that long period of time is to give council members, anybody else has questions about the code, time to digest everything, ask staff questions if need be, set up time to come in and meet with staff to go over things. Because the code is essentially, when we say Building and Fire Code, what it really is is about, it is 11 books, about 4,000 pages worth of information in there, so it's a lot, quite a bit of stuff. Obviously, the ordinances that you get have just the revisions and amendments that we have for those. And it looks like a lot in there, but really, it's not as much as it seems because of the structure of the code. We were just changing maybe one word or one number, we had to go through and do the whole section. A great example is immediately on the building code, that very first section, there's discussions of exemptions and things like that. That's two pages of text for really only two changes. Fences and driveways are exempted, are taken out of the exemptment list, and we just changed one number in there, the number square footage. So that just kind of gives you a feel for, it looks like a lot of changes, but really, a lot of times it's just a word or a number that we're changing, we just have to put that whole section in there. And with also with that being said, obviously, you need the books to go with the ordinances if you really want to dive deep into it, to put the two together, to see what the exactly the changes are. So again, this represents many hours of work that's been done by community development staff, as well as Overland Park Fire Department. The building codes of the 2018 building codes, a lot of folks go ask why are we adopting them in 2020 when they came out in 2018? It takes about two years to go through and vet all the changes in the code and come up with recommendations for amendments. And when the 2018 codes came out, there is a Johnson County Building Officials Group that's made up of all the building officials throughout Johnson County, Tony Adamson, Marion's community, excuse me, building official is a member of that group. And they started reviewing that, and they took about 12 to 15 months to review the 2018 code. And then from that, they came up with recommendations for amendments and revisions to that. And that kind of established what they call a model code, which mostly municipalities use as a starting point. Obviously, that's what Overland Park used, used some of those recommendations as their starting point. Then from there, they made some changes and recommendations for their own purposes. But they also did quite a bit of vetting themselves. They did vetting with developers and builders, as well as residents and property owners. And obviously, Overland Park, particularly on the home building side, has a lot of, a lot of folks doing a lot of work there, have a great deal of interest in this, so they obviously worked very hard in vetting that through those various groups. When it came time for their adoption, they had support from all those different groups, and so they had broad support for that. So that really is the starting point that Maryam used for our codes. It obviously makes sense, since as we all know, Overland Park Fire provides our fire service, and really, the fire code and building codes are very much interlinked. So again, just using the Overland Park code as a starting point was, really made a lot of sense. So why do we have Building and Fire Codes? Really, the main reason is, is building safety provides owners, residents, and customers with safe buildings, whether they be new buildings or remodeled buildings. That is probably the primary reason for the fire codes. And also, I think some folks don't sometimes forget that also is, for the benefit of our first responders, having buildings that are designed in such a way that when an accident such as a fire happens, that they still are able to be resilient during that fire, perhaps through the design or through sprinklers and things like that, to really help our first responders when they come into those buildings to have an idea of how that building will act during a fire. Also allows for uniformity, so first responders also know where command centers at, where fire department hookups are at. Those are somewhat in a standardized fashion, as well as markings and things like that in the building. So obviously, whenever we think of building safety, the first thoughts is for owner, resident, and customers, but it also really is a big benefit for our first responders. Also, building codes really lend a lot towards efficiency, energy efficiency. Also, I kind of put in there accessibility, also with efficiency. Allows for, sets designs for buildings that are both energy efficient and provides a lot of benefit for, for folks who perhaps are handicapped. Inconsistency, having codes that are similar throughout the community really helps the design, building design professionals, such as builders, architects, because they have a good idea that most communities have very similar code, obviously. If you go to one community with a building code that's much older, and then you go to a different one that has very different codes, have to, it takes a lot of time for those design professionals, as well as builders, to understand what the nuances are between the different communities. So that is also a big benefit. And then lastly, the reassurance, and it kind of goes back up to building safety. Having building codes provides a reassurance to residents that new homes, new buildings, as well as remodeled buildings are being constructed to a high standard, to the most current standards. Why update the building code? Building code generally, Building and Fire Codes are generally every three years. It's generally a three-year cycle. The new versions come out. We are on the 2012 version. We're going to the 2018 version. Maryam, like most of the other communities within the area, typically skip a version. Now, the 2012 version that we adopted in 2014 was a big shift between the previous code and the current codes. Caused some of the communities had a little more difficulty, because they had lagged quite a bit behind. So that big shift really was a big change for not only the staff of those communities, as well as the builders. But Maryam's did a very good job over the recent years, keep incrementally going along with the changes, which is really, which is important. So this is our normal cycle. I will say that 2018 code is nearly not as much of a shift as going to the 2012 code. Most of the changes that are within the code are simply incremental changes. So again, not nearly the big change between, to get up to the 2012 code. So why do we do building codes? Improve safety and efficiency of buildings? Builders and designers each year, are constantly learning new things, coming up with improvements to buildings. So again, incremental improvements to buildings, as well as citizen and customer expectations. Generally, our residents expect that new buildings and remodeled buildings are done to the most current standards of safety, efficiency, convenience, and accessibility. And then again, consistency with our neighboring jurisdictions. Having codes that are similar to our neighbors, again, helps to construct contractors and design professors know generally what the expectations are within the area. And then the last one is to better align with the fire, Overland Park Fire Code. When we adopted the 2012 code back in 2014, City Maryam was still providing its own fire service. So this is obviously to get us more aligned with Overland Park, because again, they're the ones that provide us with fire service, which includes building inspections for fire safety and also plan review. So what requires a building permit? I've just come up with some few examples, some things here. Obviously, there's many more other examples. But in general, if it's maintenance or repair, that typically does not require a building permit. So, but I've kind of gone, like I said, gone through some types of work that we come across daily and questions about whether or not a permit is required. And again, I'll purpose this to say that there's kind of always exceptions to almost everything. So if anybody ever has any question whether building permits required, reach out, email, or contact Community Development would be more than happy to walk somebody through that process. But the first part, installing a new fence, yes, if you're installing a new fence, that requires a building permit. If you're repairing a fence, that does not. So putting on new pickets or things like that, for placing pickets on existing fence don't require a permit. A new roof or re-roof does require a permit. Fixing or repairing existing plumbing, again, that's under the maintenance part of it, that does not. A new deck does require a building permit. There are some exceptions. If a deck's not a certain height, there's certain square footage, it may not require a permit. But again, if there's ever any questions, please contact Community Development. A driveway does require a permit. Placing an electrical outlet does not. HVAC, your heating and cooling, those replacement does require a permit. Electrical panel install or swap out, that's your fuse panel, does require a permit. Residential accessory building that's 150 square feet or smaller does not. As with all these things, you still, even though it doesn't require a permit, there's still requirement to be in all applicable zoning codes. Then the other part of whether or not a permit, excuse me, other part of the building aspects is, there's the building permit side, but then there's also, do you, does the person pulling the building permit need to have a Johnson County Contractor License? A little bit about JCCO, it's a fantastic program that the county puts on. City Maryam joined the program back in 2012, one of the last communities in the area to join it, the program. But we are part of the Contractor JCCO program. And what it is, is, is exactly what it sounds like. Johnson County provides a license to contractors. Now, those contractors had to meet requirements for continuing education. You also need to meet requirements for insurance. So somebody who does have a JCCO should have knowledge, should have the education, and probably most importantly, they have the insurance to do the work that they have the license for. So that's a little bit about the JCCO program. Again, as I said, they do provide a lot of, quite a bit of training, actually. Folks without, within the whole Midwest area do attend that training on a regular basis, as well as our own building staff. So again, walk through this. Now, the things that are not in bold are things that are in place right now, is today. So these ordinances don't change. The two things that are in bold, and I'll go through those in depth when I get there, those are changes that are being proposed by the two ordinances that are before you. So doing work in a residence that you own and live in, that does not require a building permit. So a person who owns a house and lives in the house, a single-family house or duplex, can come in and pull a permit to do any work they want to do on their house. They are required to sign an affidavit that states or certifies that they will be doing the work and that you will not hire a outside contractor to do the work. So that's the first thing to know. And again, that's towards the idea that property ownership, that if you live in the house, you should have the ability to do, to work on that house. It doesn't necessarily mean that somebody has the training to do the work, but we will still issue a building permit to, again, a resident who lives and own the house. So a roof or re-roof that does require Johnson County Contractor License, license, again, if it's being done by the occupant and the owner of the residence, it does not. Installing a new deck also requires a Johnson County Contractor License. Install, repair, and electrical panel, again, requires a contractor's license. Again, both of those, both of those two things are instances where if it's the owner occupant, it would not need to have a JCCO. Property owner working on a residence they own, but do not currently reside in. This is a change. We are clarifying this better in this code. That are going to, we do recommend that they are required to have a JCCO. Our current code, there's some gray area in there. We, it isn't clear on that. So we do have folks who have bought a house, but they don't live in it yet, but they're telling us they will live in it, and they will certify to that fact. And so they are able to pull a building permit. What we're finding is there are instances in when folks are looking to flip a house, but don't have a JCCO, they will use that provision. My house flipper means somebody who simply finds a, buys a house as a fixture upper, fix it up, never lives in it, and as soon as they fix it up, immediately puts it on the market. And we also find that sometimes people will buy a home and want to renovate it and then move into it, but they get in the renovations and find that they're in and in over their heads there, taking on a project that they don't have the experience with or the skills with. And we find those instances happen, not often, but they do happen. And so we're really recommending that we kind of close that loophole. The next one is landlord working on rental unit they own. Again, if it requires a building permit, the landlord has to have, either the landlord has to have a JCCO, or they have to hire somebody that has a JCCO to do the work. Working on non-residential building, again, commercial building, requires a JCCO. Again, if a permit's needed for it. Concrete flat work does not require a JCCO. Installing a new, new fence does not require a JCCO. And constructing a new home, these, it goes back up to the previous instance I talked about, there. When you change, again, we're found, we've had one instance where a gentleman who said he was going to live in the homes, pulled the, pulled his own building permit, and again, they're in way over their heads, thankfully. After many hours of staff time, that individual sold that host home to somebody who didn't know what they were doing. But again, we're recommending that it be clearly stated in the order, that recommended that, clearly stated that constructing a new home requires a JCCO. I am going to stop there, because a lot of times folks have some questions about JCCO, about building permits, what's required, what isn't, and see if there's any questions. I can kind of see all of you, but so if you have a question about those two things, please speak up. I see Councilmember Silvers.
Hey, Brian, this is Jason Silvers. I do have a question. I have someone scheduled to come replace carpet in three bedrooms in November. Do I need a permit for that?
You do not.
Thank you.
See, Councilmember Neal.
Yes. Yeah, obviously, as a, as a holder of a Class A Johnson County Contractor License myself, I'm certainly very interested in, in, so I've got some questions later. We, obviously, it's first reading, so hopefully we can, you know, resolve some of those. But I wanted a little more clarification on the, the change, property owner working on a residence they own, but don't currently reside in. And I, the scenarios that you laid out are somewhat, you know, familiar in the sense that I could see both sides of, of the problem. And I kind of wanted to know a little bit more about how, you know, how specifically, is that a, the change that we're looking at, is that a Maryam only? Or is that something that came from the Johnson County Code Committee? Or, and then what specifically, my concern is this. There are a lot of people who may buy, say, a distressed home and do intend to reside there. And, but it's not really habitable at that point, for example. And so, you know, I kind of want to get a little bit into the weeds of how this would work, because I do think that requiring a licensed contractor to do the work might preclude some people from actually taking on, you know, distressed property and bringing it back so that they could move into it. The idea of people getting it over their heads is also, you know, a great concern as well. So I just kind of wanted to open that discussion and understand better about sort of the background for this.
Sure. Those are all excellent questions. I will say, from staff's perspective, and kind of look, us looking at our crystal ball, of all the things in those two ordinances, that one is most likely the one that will cause the most calls and questions. That will probably be the one that has the most impact on people, is that one. Of everything in those two ordinances, that, that one there is probably be the biggest change between the way we currently operate. Now, that is something I would say is probably Maryam-specific. Most of the communities do have language that require a JCCO if, if it is not the property owner and the residents, excuse me, not the property owner. What we are finding is, again, let's, I want to make clear that we understand that if it's just maintenance, like painting, or if it's carpet, if it's non-structural changes, those do not require a building permit. So if a house is needing upgrades in, perhaps cabinetry, upgrades in painting, floors and things like that, those typically do not require a building permit. So just want to make sure, I know you, Councilmember Neal, understand that, but I just want to make sure everybody else understands it. So in regards to buying distressed homes, what our experience has been is, one, house flippers will use this as the, as, as ability to not have, to have a JCCO to do work that requires a building permit. Again, a house flipper is simply an individual who buys a distressed home, fixes it up, and then sells it. Again, they serve a purpose, so I don't want anybody to think that it's not something we don't want to see or promote, but from staff perspective, we think that somebody who is a licensed contractor has the training and the insurance, should be best doing those things. And then the other aspect that you talked about is someone who is buying a distressed home with the purpose of moving into it. Those are the folks that perhaps will be most imposed upon this recommended changes. And what we find is that many times those homeowners, or excuse me, property owners get in over their heads to understand the project they're getting into. And it does require quite a bit of staff time. A great example is an individual bought a home, started doing work on it, decided they also need to do the electrical. They hadn't pulled a building permit for the electrical, but they had installed all the electrical, sheetrocked over the whole thing, and staff showed up, and obviously, there was a problem at that point in time. So those, those are kinds, that's where staff position is on this. Again, we feel that requiring JCCO ensures that a contractor who has insurance and who has experience, who has the education to do those things and the skill to do those things, will be doing those things. But from, with staff also fully recognizes that this is probably the one provision in all of these things that could, could cause the greatest concern.
Um, yeah, it's kind of a follow-up. I, I absolutely agree, home flippers are not necessarily the most scrupulous folks sometimes. And I really think it is important that for those folks, they do have a licensed contractor, Johnson County Licensed Contractor. But I also, I mean, there are, I have a hard time saying that, you know, a person who is actually going to live in the home shouldn't be able to pull the permit and do the work. The cost will increase substantially. Uh, the cost will increase substantially if they have to pay for their labor rather than do the labor themselves. And if there is a, a way of determining maybe a little bit more of a finesse. That someone is actually going to move into the home rather than um. So that, tha- then just flip it. For example, I don't know whether you can determine whether they've. Bought multiple houses, they have multiple, own multiple properties, or generally flippers have more than one. Project going sometimes, or they've done it repeatedly. I don't know, I'm just trying to figure out some way to sort of. Fine tune this to where we get the desire, uh, desired intent of making sure that, you know, the flippers. Um, are uh, covered and, and are, are required to use. Uh, Johnson County Contractor Licensed Individual or, you know, firm, but. Residents who, or, you know, individuals who actually know what they're doing, um, and know what they're getting into can still. Can still do the project themselves. That's my concern.
Oh, under, uh, understand, um, from stash perspective, though. We don't, we've been trying to figure out a way to um, fi- to, to separate those two. However, we have to recognize that um, bad actors are going to tell us whatever they, whatever they need to tell us to avoid. Um, getting into J C C L. So um, we have to go from the fact that um. If we ask folks to say, hey, certify that you will live in this for six months. They're going to say, they being an unscrupulous flipper are going to say, yes, they will live in there six months. And then with no intentions of doing that and won't do. Um, so uh, and we also have to treat like situations in similar fashions as well. So. Um, again, buying a home, even if somebody who perhaps is going to buy it with all good intentions of living in the home. But for whatever reason, as they get to the end of the project, they need to sell it. Um, i- i- it makes it very tough. Uh, to, to try to separate those two things and administrate those things in a fair and equitable manner.
What about, what about requiring them to post some sort of a bond, performance bond?
Uh, again, that's the, the, we, it could be a possibility. Um, that gets back to cost. You know, obviously a homeowner who's doing that probably is going to have a, a more difficult time. Uh, first of all, knowing exactly what a performance bond is and obtaining a performance bond.
Hey Brian, how, how big of issue is this? Um, and I mean, how many permits are for owners that aren't currently occupying their homes?
Right, no, that's an excellent question as well. This is not a, a, this is not a big issue. Until those times where folks who are in over their heads are, 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 are. Um, so once or twice a year do we find that this is, this is an issue. Uh, it's not um, an overly big issue, but uh, we find that once or twice a year, we'll find somebody who is either in over their heads or acting unscrupulously.
But.
But, but how many, how many permits are pulled by homeowners that don't live in their houses?
That uh, that'd be a tough thing for us to figure out. Uh.
Okay.
I, I did, it's, it's two to three times a year probably.
Okay. So it's not, it's not a big number.
No, it is not. But when it, again, when things go wrong, when somebody gets in over their head, i- it is a significant amount of staff time.
I understand.
Brian, this is Chris Hands. And did you say at the beginning that this is a Merriam only kind of condition? How are other municipalities handling it in the county? They have.
If they had that condition, we're simply requiring an affidavit in much the same fashion as we do. So they, if I guess to answer the question, they either, it is not something they're overly concerned about, probably, is probably the best way to answer that. Any other questions?
When, eh, Brian, when someone, we have an inspection and they fail. Do we charge for a re-inspection?
Uh, we will, if it gets to be a, a, uh, if, yes, we can and we do.
Okay, so in these situation where someone's over their head and inspector comes time after time after time. We, we could be charging them for that.
We could be charging them for that, but again, we recognize the realities of it. Um, that is, those are instances where it is simply a homeowner who's got in over their head and, and charging. More is, is sometimes not making the situation better.
And, and I would guess the re-inspections are these homeowners, they're not contractors.
Hmm, that is correct.
Okay.
Could, eh, there's a kernel, this is Dave Neil again. There's, there's a kernel of an idea there possibly. Uh, I would think that you could put something in there that if, you know, they failed inspection. So many times or some, some criteria that they would have to, you know, get a, a contract, and they would agree to do that before issuing the permit. In the first place. I mean, I'm just trying to find a way to sort of. Kind of solve this problem without, you know, one sledgehammer.
Well, having staff time involved, if it's being compensated for, doesn't really bother me a lot. If it's staff time that, you know, that person is not paying for, then that's, that's a, that's a problem. But if they, you know, we're, we're, we're charging for re-inspections. You know, I, I understand it takes staff time, but we also are being compensated for it.
I, I, I agree with that also, but I also recognize that what you don't want to have is a situation where. Someone messes something up so badly that they then walk away from the project. And you have a, basically a, a, a structure that is, is a problem. Uh, yeah, that's, so that's, that's, I think where, where staff's coming from partially, partially is a fear of that. But I also think there might be a way to, to not overly burden people who are actually know what they're doing and. And, and really do want to uh, purchase a, a, an upgrade, upgrade a property in Merriam. So I'm just trying to find some. Some mechanism, or at least throw out some ideas for consideration. I don't know what the answer is, but I, but, but it is a problem.
And I think the greatest danger is someone goes in and screws it all up and you can't inspect the quality into it. And eventually they get it passed and it's still screwed up and.
Well. Yeah, I don't know that they would pass it if it's, if it's, if it's, code is pretty much cut and dried in a lot of ways. You, you may have to tear something out and redo it again, and which is very expensive, but.
Yeah.
It's not, it's not, I doubt they're going to pass it, you know, without it being right.
Depends on how well they get it hidden. It's not the bad actor we're trying to deal with.
I, I think the thing that we would just, what, what would also help, and I think this is good conversation, and I think uh, uh, Councilmember Neil, uh. You, you've kind of hit on what we have struggled with internally also is how do you find that balance? So how do you sort out? Um, how do you sort out those that if we could see into the hearts of folks and know what their true intentions were? How would you, how you can separate those from folks that are, are, are just going to tell the city what the city needs to hear so they can. Do what they need to do as cheaply as possible. Um, I, I think one of the things that would be helpful, um. I- in all cases, when it comes to codes, is recognizing that i- i- in many situations, well, yes, codes are cut and dry. Um, we also have a desire to want to work with people. We don't want to overly burden people that maybe set out and had the best of intentions, but got themselves into a situation. Um, to where now we're balancing fees and fines and re-inspection fees with their inability to do that. Because really, they were flipping that on, flipping something on the cheap anyway. But my point being that I, I think. Uh, hopefully council recognizing that these situations arise. Um, because ultimately you will be the ones that hear from staff, not from staff, but hear from constituents that are upset about staff. Saying you have to tear those walls out, as you all do. You know, people build a shed and then they want to know why that shed has to be torn down, because it's. Six inches from the property line, or people, you know, install a driveway that's not up to code and you're the ones that hear from it. And then there's this um, desire from the council members to want to work with those residents and. Kind of uh, provide them with uh, a, a, a level of advocacy. But then there's the, the plain black and white nature of the code, and when things are wrong, they're wrong. So uh, I guess my point is, is that. Um, regardless of what we do, we always do try to work with folks, but at the end of the day, I think we have to. Um, really recognize that our, our codes folks really. Have a black and white, one plus one equals two, not two and a half, not one point seven five. Uh, type of uh, job. They, they, a- and um. Giving, giving staff the benefit of the doubt in these things that where we can work with folks, we will, but. We're, we're inevitably going to upset some people, no matter what we do. I think it's sort of a long-winded way of. Um, kind of sharing with you just the nature of being the codes or the building official when you're dealing with. Um, well-intended but amateur contractors.
Well, Kim. I'd like to say one more thing, if possible, on this particular topic. Um, you know, I, I. Then kind of response to, to Chris, I think there are certain things that are um. In the code, and, and, and we're also sometimes talking about zoning and, and things like that, you know, but they're part of the code. And there are, you know, there are places where, you know, it's a safety, you know, issue, it's a major issue, you know, if they don't do it right, they're going to get. Uh, you know, it needs to be redone or whatever, but isn't there some way that we can. Such ho- homeowners who are, are, who are seeking a, a homeowner's permit. That we can provide them with some information that tells them that um. They, if they don't get it right, that we are going to be strict about enforcing the code. And so that we recommend that they uh, seek the services of a Johnson County Licensed Contractor. And if they still think that they can do it, then, you know, if we make them have, make them reduce something. Then they've been warned. And I, I mean, I just, I just, I, I, I don't know, this is, this is tough. And I appreciate what you're, what you're saying and where you're coming from too, that, but, you know, it just seems like. And I know that sometimes what code officials end up doing is when you go look at something that's not done correctly. And the homeowner didn't know how to do it correctly, we do spend some time. The code officials spend some time explaining what needs to be done or how it should have been done, or how it needs to be fixed. And so you're kind of self-educating the home, you know, the homeowner, or not self-educating, the city's educating the homeowner. About what, what they need to do, and there is a cost in that. And so maybe, I, I don't know, they're just. Um, seems like there's, there's a way either through, through re-inspection fees or. Or something to, you know, to try to, instead of going the full. You know, the full route that they can't do it themselves, they can't pull a permit and do the project themselves. Um, I, I just, I'm, I'm having a hard time with that one a little bit, obviously, trying to.
But hey, Brian, Brian, what, what, I mean, what, what are, what are the um, wha- what's, what's the repercussions of the status quo? I mean, I, I would, well, it's, it sounds like it's two cases per year, and you and I have chatted about this, but uh. Sounds like it's a couple of cases a year. I mean, I would, I would guess that just because of the nature of our housing stock. It'll probably eventually cre- in- increase. Not as it increased to three or 10 over the next several years, I don't know, but. But uh, wha- I mean, what's, other than the staff time? Where, is there a, is there a life safety? Is there a um. Wha- wha- what's, what's the harm of, of maintaining the status quo, assuming that, that be where we, you know, eventually end up?
Um, and just make sure we're being clear here, we're taking the constructing a new home out of this argument. We're only talking about the remodels. Um, the biggest concern uh, is, and again, as I mentioned earlier, as Chris just alluded to, this is, this is not. This is once, maybe twice a year, and, and it is staff time. And uh, is probably the biggest concern along with making sure that the work done is, is good quality work. Um, so those are probably the two biggest concerns um, that we have. If continuing the status quo, i- it'll be fine. Staff will work through these issues, staff will deal with these issues. And, and, and it will be fine. So um, from a staff perspective, if this is something that council. If there's consensus on the council, we can definitely make a change, easily make a change to um, make it go back to where, where it currently is. And we can operate on the current um, status without any problems whatsoever.
And it sounds like quite possibly look at perhaps how we, we uh, levy our re-inspection fees. Or how we manage our time with our special cases that we run into a couple of times a year. Does that sound like something that we could. Uh, evaluate between now and the next time we talk about this, Brian?
Yes, and now I would say Councilmember Neil also is um, pointing and perhaps putting together some information in regards to providing to. Um, folks that we feel are, are, you know, home folks who are wanting to build up a home and, excuse me, remodel the home and live in it. We can also put together some information in regards to um, you know, the benefits of having a licensed contractor do. The work that perhaps you, you as the um, remodeler aren't capable of doing, um, and things like that. So. Um, definitely can do some work along those lines as well. Um, so. And I see other council members with questions as well. Um, I know, I think. Hands had hers up and then Councilmember Yodrich and then Silver's and Councilmember Pete as well. So, Councilmember Hands?
I, I just, I remember when we approved the last one. Um, and I also remember being surprised about certain things that require building permits. That I have had done and didn't know they needed to have a building permit, like replacing the HVAC. Um, and then in the writing, not in your table, but you talked about if you replaced. A drain, which I assume is an inside drain, not an exterior drain. So what are the repercussions if a building permit is not pulled when this work is done?
Sure. Um, i- in, if, if work is done without a permit. Um, depends on the nature of the work, it depends on if we know about it. Um, if it is done by a licensed contractor. Um, then there is repercussions for that licensed contractor. The city can file a complaint on the contractor. And investigation can occur, and there can be some penalties for that contractor through the Johnson County Contractor Licensing System. Yeah, another, another positive for the Johnson County Contractor Licensing System. Um, so um. Depends on the nature of the work, uh, if, if what's going on, if, you know, whether or not. It ultimately would be the homeowner or the property owner that would be responsible for it. So if there is a. Um, notice to appear or ticket issued, it would be for the homeowner. So as we tell uh, homeowners when they're looking for contractors. That they, um, the property owner, we always tell them, make sure that there's an understanding between the property owner and the contractor. Who is pulling the building permit, and then make sure that if the contractor states they are, that you require the contractor to. Provide you a copy of that building permit. Um, so. It, it really is on a case-by-case basis if the work has been done without a permit. Probably the biggest thing is that, or one of the most biggest things, if someone goes to sell a home, the disclosures typically are on a real estate disclosure. It states that all the work that was, all the work requiring a permit that was done to the house did receive a permit, so. Um, that is also something that when you are homeowner selling your home, if you've not required the proper building permits. That's a disclosure that you're not able to check off, stating that you have got the proper permit, so. Um, but again, ultimately, if works done without a permit and it's necessary, the um, it falls on the property owner.
Thank you.
Councilmember Yodrich, I think, was next.
Chris actually asked and answered my question. I, I essentially, in layman's terms, since uh, I am not a Class A. Contract firm holder, and a lot of this is code speak to me, um, wanted to make sure. Uh, with Councilmember Neil's concerns that, are we talking about, we're talking about edge cases here. As far as what he's concerned about, and it sounds like there is a solution. Well, I guess my, my question is, what is the risk either way? Right? So does this, does the city. Spend more time and money in one direction and the citizens spend more time and money going one direction, either including it or not including it? Um, does that make sense?
The, the, the risks of, of not changing the way we have those situations are that. Um, sta- additional staff time will be required for projects that if a Johnson County Contractor License. Um, holder had done it, um, staff wouldn't be spending that much time on it. Um, staff wouldn't be spending that much time on it, um, is, is really a time factor on, on, on staff's time. Um, and then there is also concern that work can be done that, that, um, is, is not quality work. Again, we do inspect as all we can, but, um, also the first ones to say that we don't see at all. Uh, folks can hide things from us and stuff like that, so, um, so that's the risk of it, um, if we don't change anything. Um, you know, additional staff time, perhaps, uh, you know, not quality work. If we do change things, the risk is, um, there's gonna be, uh, property owners who have bought in a home. Who have budgeted for one number, and then when they find out that they can't do the work, and they're not to budget a higher number. And they may not be able to, uh, do what they wanted to do.
And so your experience with that latter scenario is that it's rare in comparison to the rest of the building permits that are pulled?
Yes, what we're talking about is a very rare instance, so I'm, again, when I'm, I'm not, I want to make sure we're all clear. That this is not something that happens on a frequent basis at all.
Sure, I just want to make sure that we're spending, um, the right amount of time discussing some of those things. And I just wanted to understand the frequency of it and, um, the value of having or not having the ability to do that. So thank you.
Sure, uh, Councilmember Silvers. So you're, oh, you're muted.
Sorry about that, um, I know we've kind of discussed this already, but I just want to clarify. It's somewhat self-serving and it's somewhat hypothetical, but, um, say someone wants to buy a smaller house. Down the road that they're going to maybe retire to, um, and they want to gut it and fix it up while they're living in their first house. Um, would they have to have a Class A license for that? And the second part to my question is, what constitutes living in a residence? Is there a time period, ask me eight hours of the day? Does that have to be, you have to spend the night there? Is that not clarified?
Um, the first question, uh, under our current, um, ordinances. If you live in a home and buy a home down the street that you want to fix up and live in at a later date. And that repairs require a building permit, so again, we're talking about require a building permit.
Right.
Uh, you can, as a property owner, pull the building permit without having a Johnson County Contractor's License.
Okay.
Okay, the propose, the, the ordinances that are before you, um, this evening would change that scenario. Would change that scenario in that if you own a house that you live in, and then you buy one down the street that you want to fix up. And move into at a later point in time, then you would have to have, either you would have to have a Johnson County Contractor's License. Or you'd have to hire a contractor that has the Contractor's License. In regards to residency, no, we, there's, we don't have, um, definitions for that. We simply ask, um, are you the resident or do you plan to occupy the building? Um, obviously, we can tell through, uh, records, uh, property records if they own and occupy the building, um, that they currently live in. But if they buy one, like you said, down the street, uh, we simply have them certify that they do plan on residing in there in the future.
Thank you.
Other questions? Councilmember Pape?
Yeah, um, mine goes to, uh, in this instance, we're a property or somebody that doesn't reside or currently residing. And it's gonna do the work themselves, they own the property. I, I think one of the biggest concerns is the fact that, that they don't necessarily know what they're doing, like it, like a contract licensed, uh, person would. But, um, but also when Tony goes in, they go in and say, I want to do Project A. Uh, and get a permit to do it, because they're gonna pull a permit, because it does require a permit. Maybe it's, let's say it's roofing the house. And, uh, so does Tony explain to them the process as far as, well, okay, that's fine. Here's your permit, but I need to come out here and do, you know, the inspection when you get all the shingles taken off. I need to see that, you know, you put on the, you know, the, the proper, you know, fifteen pound belt. You know, the, the ice damming and, you know, because I, I see what you're saying and, and obviously experienced it. Where somebody doesn't know that they need to have it inspected before they put the shingles down, so.
Yeah, to answer your question, if, if, uh, Tony Abson or building official, um, knows, and, and we use it can tell. Uh, if that is somebody who doesn't have a J C C L, but they're planning on doing their own work. He does walk them through as much as he can, um, what the process is. What we do find a lot of times is it's simply a scope problem. Folks think that they just need to do this a little bit, and then they dig into it, and suddenly they're off doing all kinds of other things. And Tony shows up and, and, and they should have had a permit for all that additional work. But they just lose sight of the fact that, um, you know, they, they've changed scope and, and now they're off doing other things. But again, um, I don't want to belabor it, this is something that is not, uh, something we do with on a frequent ba- frequent basis. So, um, it is something that we can continue in the fashion we currently, uh, continue with some modifications with that. With it, to the process and, and maybe have a, um, keep the ordinances for this part the same. Um, but maybe do some better job and, uh, do some education about, uh, what, uh, somebody's getting themselves into.
Yeah, um, hopefully, Bob, it's a thirty pounds belt at least.
Yeah, yeah, it did change.
A- anyway, um.
Two layers of fifteen.
Well, anyway, uh, I, it seems like certain kinds of, of permits. Might be more likely to be, you know, uh, attempted by homeowners anyway. And some of those, you know, maybe a little bit better education, uh, uh, at the time they come in to pull the permit. They're still gotta pull the permit and it still has to pass inspection. So, you know, that might, you know, cer- you know, do, do a lot to solving the, the problems downstream. When you find out that they've done it wrong or, or gone beyond the scope. I mean, even discussing that this is the scope that this permit covers, and if you do anything else that requires a permit, you need to come back in and get a permit. I mean, there's just ways of, I think there's ways of handling it, that's all, that are, uh. You know, that, that we can look into, and it sounds like that there's at least a willingness to maybe look into it, and I appreciate that.
Sure, well, I am going to continue on, because I am not to the end of this yet, so let me, uh, go on to my next slide. Um, again, kind of highlight the differences between the twenty twelve and twenty eighteen, uh, building fire codes. Again, as you look through the ordinance, it looks like there's a lot, um, and, and I will say there's some incremental changes in there. But these here are probably the ones, uh, some of the major changes that, um, staff has identified between the twelve and the eighteen. We've already talked about the first two, so we, we won't go back over that. Um, the next one is group home definition is gon- uh, is being revised to eight or fewer residents, uh, nine clean staff. And the purpose of that is to, uh, align, um, the zoning code along with the building code. Also with the, um, state statutes, um, if you recall our conversations about group homes and things like that. Uh, there's also a play in here, uh, state statutes, and so we're trying to, again, get these things, get these, all three of those lined up as best we can. So it makes sense not only to the residents or someone willing to do a group home, but just as importantly for staff. Um, so that's the purpose of that. Um, the next one, energy rating assist index, you know, for a new home is changed from eighty-five to seventy. A lower number is a better number, so, so, uh, please remember that. Um, cur- currently, like we said, ours is eighty-five, and we recommend changing down to seventy. Uh, most of the area municipalities within Johnson County have gone between the number of eighty and sixty-eight. Uh, Overland Park did choose sixty-eight, um, staff, Merriam staff thinks seventy is a number that serves Merriam. Uh, um, best to kind of best balances, uh, issues of energy efficiency, uh, new home affordability. Uh, long-term maintenance and livability, um, so, so we think seventy, seventy is the right number. Again, um, quite a bit, uh, change and improvement from the eighty-five we currently are at. And again, these are just for new homes, uh, that we're just discussing. Um, we also are gonna set standards for residential driveways in the code, um, adopt the international swimming pool and spa code. And my purpose of that is that the swimming pool and spa portions of the code, I believe, were removed from, um, the I R C, the International Residential Code. And put in its own separate code, and again, uh, better align our fire code with, uh, Overland Park's current fire code. And that really is the end, again, kind of what I mentioned, um, next steps is, is to give folks time to meet with staff. Um, set up times to meet with staff, I, I'll be frank, um, while I have, uh, we have the O P, O- Overland Park Fire, the staff here as well. Um, I am definitely not in a position to start, uh, answering specific questions about specific parts of the ordinance. Um, the, I have to, we have to get the books out, have to figure out what exactly changed. Um, because again, as I mentioned earlier, there may be six paragraphs of text for only one small minute change in there. Um, so, uh, questions that are specific questions about specific things within the ordinances. Um, best be handled if you, if you want, you can send us emails, we'll be happy to research it. Or, um, some of the time to come in to talk to staff and go through those things. Um, again, uh, looks like a lot of changes, but they're really between the twenty-twelve codes that we adopted and the twenty-eighteen. There's not a lot, we've carried forward a lot of the amendments and changes from twenty-twelve to twenty-eighteen. So, um, for that, happy to answer questions I can, um, Councilmember Neil. You're on mute. You're on mute.
Sorry, a couple of, I'm gonna try to be real short, I have a, a couple of questions. One is a specific question, or somewhat specific, and one is a very general one. Um, the specific question relates to the, the driveways, um, and, uh, from my standpoint. Uh, driveways have always been an issue because they really are, a lot of times been silent in terms of the construction of, of a lot of that flatwork.
Right.
Uh, so I think the idea of, of having some sort of, um, code regarding driveways. Because they're expensive, you know, port, you know, they're expensive investment for people, is a good idea. So I'm gonna look at that, you know, a little more closely, but if you could describe sort of in general terms, kind of what, what, um. You know, what the changes are, and if they, are they changes regarding the construction of the driveways? Or are they changes regarding more or less the, the zoning and the, you know, the placement of the driveways?
Uh, this is the, specifically the construction of a driveway, um, previously in the past, not to go into all the different personnel. Uh, we had dealing with this issue, there was not a desire from, from the staff that was in place at that time to do driveway standards. Um, our current building official, Tony Abson, is more than willing to put their fourth driveway standard. So we have specific standards in there in regards to the court construction. It's on, um, I'm, uh, it's on page sixteen of forty in the, uh, code, in the residential code. Uh, chapter three, section R three oh nine, that goes through and down, so.
Yeah, is that specific to us, or is that specific to, that, where did that, that particular, uh, section and language come from?
I believe that came from Overland Park.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, and that, that kind of leads into my, my next question. Obviously, I want to look at this a little bit more, and as you said, it's hard to see what the changes are. Um, I know that, you know, when we get a new code book, uh, the code books highlight that the, you know, they underline the changed areas. From the, the previous, uh, versions and, and so we do have a, you know, when we're looking at code books. We have an idea where, oh, that's different, and kind of flags it out. And then in this material that you presented, um, is there any way to sort of, uh, underline the, the changes? Or, or in some way call them out, um, and then also the other thing I was, and this is all something maybe we can talk about, you know, off, offline. But, but how, um, which of the changes are, uh, changes recommended by the Johnson County Code Committee? And which are changes that are strictly, you know, Merriam, uh, changes?
Right.
Kind of like to know those things.
I would say the first one of, of being able to go, unfortunately, um, the International Code, uh, Council who puts together the codes. Um, does not provide us with edible text of this, so we have to go through and essentially put it together ourselves. So we are unable to in any kind of efficient manner go through and mark the changes between what we're recommending and what the code says. Um, so again, that's why, um, it's best to come in and, and have a meeting with staff, or just get the code books and go through them. And, and look and see what the changes are, so.
Yeah.
I would say that would be something to, um, the second question, um, we can go through and do a little bit of, of what's specific to Merriam. I, I don't think that'd be difficult to do, as difficult to do, um, so if there's a desire for that, I, I can try to put the, I, I will be the first one to say. It's not gonna be comprehensive, I, there may be some things I missed, um, but yeah, we can, I can go through and flag the things that are specific to Merriam.
Uh, the reason I ask that specifically is I also agree from standpoint of, uh, the efficiency for, of contractors. From having some uniformity across the county, and so to the extent that we are doing something different, you know, I'd kind of like to.
Sure.
See what that is.
Sure, um, I, I can do that, I, I would say, um, just kind of off the top of my head, some of the biggest differences are actually around fire code. In regards to how big a tanks are allowed, um, Councilmember Pape can, uh, probably attest to, test to that. So, um, those are probably some of the, um, bigger differences, uh, we don't allow as big of, uh, tanks of flammable stuff. As, as other communities do, so.
That's out of my, my bailiwick, so.
Um, other questions? Don't see any questions, um, so I, I, staff, I, I'd like to go back to, um, I think summarize what I was hearing. In regards to the issue of, of folks who want to, folks that purchase a home, but want to fix it up and not get a J C C L. Uh, I just want to make sure, it seems like there was consensus that we don't change our current regulations in regards to that situation. And we work on putting together some information for those people in that kind of situation. And also look at, um, adjusting behaviors through the, through the use of, uh, additional fees. For, you know, additional inspections and things like that, I want to make sure that that's, when I see, I see head nodding, so.
I, this is Chris Hands, and I would like to add into that the caveat that you do things that protect. Um, or best utilize staff resources, so it's not just dollars, but your time and, and efforts.
Thank you, I was, looks like, I will, so, um, we still have some work to do on them. Uh, Councilmember Pape has found a few, um, editorial things, and I appreciate that, so we'll make some changes there. And if any other council member finds an editorial problem, please email me, call me. Again, lots of eyes have seen this multiple times, but I'll be, will be the first one to say that, you know, we miss stuff too. So if you see anything like that, please let me know, and then we also will revise, uh, the ordinance that you see in, in, at next month. To make it go back to what, how we currently administer those situations every month, so. That is all I have for the scene for that presentation, so if there isn't any other questions, I will stop sharing my screen. And, um, that's all for me for now, thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Okay. That pretty much concludes that, uh, we're going, this is the first reading, so we don't need a motion for it, obviously. And, and that gives us time for any of our staff members to respond to council questions as we always do, if there are any. Or, or if you want more specifics on details, uh, they're, they're certainly gonna be available for you to cut, to reach out to them. So we'll be bringing this back at the appropriate time for the second reading, which will be the final reading. Um, we're gonna move to monthly financial report, and this, we're gonna ask Donna to provide us with an update on, uh, on our finance condition.
Good evening, um, I think, uh, much as I said, I think at the last meeting. That, um, our sales tax numbers continue to be good. And, uh, we definitely, that's definitely good news for us. In fact, um, I haven't shared this even with Chris yet. We, uh, late today got our sales tax numbers for October, which would be for July sales. And, or I'm sorry, August sales, and, um, I haven't had a chance to really dig in and look at them. But they appear to be, you know, excellent numbers, again, if they're down any, it's only gonna be slightly. So, um, exciting news on that end, um. Expenditures continue to be, uh, well under budget, as I think departments and Chris have been, you know, careful to monitor them. As we're going through, um, twenty. as we're going through twenty twenty and all that it's had to bring to us. So if there's any questions, I would be happy to answer them.
Any questions from anyone? Sounds like good news. We'll see how we do next month. Thank you for that report. Brian, we're going to ask you to come back and talk to us about community development update items.
Sure. Um, first of all, the update I have is on the complaint that continues to go forward. Obviously, the pandemic has rearranged the schedule that quite a bit. We're looking now at having it, hopefully, have a draft before the Planning Commission and City Council in March of twenty twenty-one. A day I would like for council members to circle, pencil in, is January sixth. We're looking at that to be the next joint Planning Commission City Council meeting. At that meeting, I I think the staff and the consultants confluence will have a pretty substantial draft for you all to review. Obviously, I will get you more information as that date gets closer. But we're looking to do that January the sixth. Um, other thing, we have, they didn't pick up today, they can figure it out, they'll pick it up tomorrow. We have issued the permit for the Reed parking lot expansion, so that is ready to go. So they will begin starting work on that. The planner position that John Hollis retired from, we hope, we have hired somebody that, and she will be in the office next Monday, and it was Andrea Fair. As an opportunity arises, we will introduce her to the council. We're excited about having her on staff and look forward to to having her with us. And then the last thing I have is I want to go over the Mid-America Regional Council, Mark, Planning Sustainable Places PSP grants. As you recall, the city applied for two, well, applied for one individually. And then we went as a joint project with Unified Government of Wyandotte, Overland Park. So we were involved with two different grant applications. The first one, the joint one, that is for Merriam Drive, essentially from where it where it leaves Merriam and the northeast section and heads all the way through Overland Park, as well as Unified Government all the way to Southwest Boulevard. We was, Overland Park is the primary agency for that. They did receive that grant. We will be providing some match funds. I will, I think it's around eighteen hundred dollars for that project. And what we're looking at is looking at the road construction type, the cross-section of the road, be looking at the uses along the road. So that's an exciting project, and that'll be getting underway in twenty twenty-one. And then the other PSP, Planning Sustainable Places Project Grant that the city's involved with is the one that we submitted independently, all by the city itself, for downtown Marion, essentially from Johnson Drive, areas south, Johnson Drive up to Waterfall Park. And we did receive that grant, we received a grant of fifty-nine thousand five hundred dollars. We anticipate the project being about a hundred and twenty thousand dollar project, so we will need to make up the difference. And again, we're very excited about that project. It really dovetails well with C I P's future plans to redo Merriam Drive in that area. So this will be a great opportunity, and it will be a great opportunity for the city to really look at what is the best cross-section for that street? What is the best design for that street, to a certain extent now? But also, any type of future development in that area as well? So it's a great synergy. It really is a fantastic opportunity to make sure we reconstruct Merriam Drive. Like I said, it provides, provides a long-term use for how we ultimately hope downtown Marion looks. So that's the big part of that grant. We'll also be looking at uses and design for for that area. We'll be reaching out to all the property owners and businesses out there involving them in the process, obviously. And that'll be something that most likely will really be getting kicked off in late in the second, third quarter of next year. So again, we, the complaint will be a great starting point for that. And and this PSP grant allows us to carry it forward. Happy to answer any questions that council members have about that or anything else.
Madam, it's your pay.
Yeah, and this is something completely different. But my question is, Chime Mission Med Center, or excuse me, Advent Health Services or system. The old life dynamics building got torn down a number of years ago or last year. That vacant ground now is fenced in. Do we know what's going, are they building something in there? And what is that? Is that going to be another office building?
That's a great question. They, Advent Health, when they went through with the medical office building, the new one there, that's right to directly to the west of that, also included that area as part of the development plan. And so they went to the planning commission for that. What the plans are that they have shown us, they haven't submitted for a building permit yet, is that essentially the west half of that property will be a parking lot. Then the east half will be green space. So it'll be a little bit of the existing parking lot, it's going to remain there. So we'll be a little bit of parking there, but essentially all the eastern half of it's going to be green space. They're also going to be doing a little bit of reconfiguration at the intersection, I believe, for some stormwater issues and things like that. Thank you.
Anybody else? All right. Well, thanks, thanks again, Brian, for keeping us up to date. Okay, let's go to staff items. Mr. Angle, we have any staff items this evening?
I don't, not at this time, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions of Mr. Angle? Okay. I'm going to jump on this and say that it's time to adjourn, if I can get a motion in a second. Bob Pape?
Here, I'd make a motion that we adjourn.
And somebody want to second that? Chris?
Chris Hands, and I'll second it.
Motion second, ma'am clerk.
All in favor?
Hi.
Bye.
Everybody have a good evening.
See you, see you in a couple of weeks.